Jamie lets me know when we're ready. All right, I'm going to call this meeting to order. Please join me for the. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Here.
Here.
Leo.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Stanton.
Here.
Truster.
Here.
All right, very good. Scott Dean's on his way back from across the pond. He'll be back in town on the 13th, so a long delayed trip overseas with his family. Next up, we have our consent agenda. You have in front of you the minutes from the special city council meeting on the 22nd, the regular city council meeting on the 27th of June, and then accounts payable in the amount of $160,244.28. I will entertain a motion, please, to get discussion started.
I will move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Okay, second, all right. Motion by Truster, second by Leo. Any questions, concerns, notices? All good? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Becken.
Yes.
Gardner.
Yes.
Leo.
Yes.
Lewis.
Yes.
Stanton.
Yes.
Truster. Yes.
Okay, very good. Also in your packet, you see the staff reports from the city manager, the treasurer, planning and zoning administrator, DPW, who we have with us, fire, police, and engineer. Any questions or comments? Yes?
Yeah, Mayor, I just have to ask about Cindy Osmond's report. Maybe she was testing to see if we read it or not. But she mentioned a deer removed from the pool, and I just.
She's on there.
Two of them.
Two of them.
I just couldn't let that pass without some inquiry.
She's on. Hi Cindy, do you want to tell us about the deer, plural, in the pool?
Yeah, there were some deer that fell into a swimming pool because there was no fence around the swimming pool, and they died. They couldn't get out, or I don't know if they hurt themselves swallowing in, but they were getting pretty, pretty ripe. And I made an arrangement with acquaintance that I know to get them removed, and at no cost to the city.
Wow. Wow. So this was at a private residence or a business?
It was a private residence, and there's other issues there that need to be addressed yet, but we have time for that. There will be a public hearing scheduled for July 18.
Okay, all right.
So, so the deer was part of the dangerous building on Campbell Road? Is that what you're saying, Cindy?
Yes, it was not a healthy situation, not for the deer, for sure, but not for the neighbors as well.
I had one more question while we have Cindy.
No.
Cindy, what's the latest on the parking spots for the duck? I had a couple of people ask about those parking spots, and then also the same ones that were related to the ones in front of women's club, are they also for the duck? Are they separate?
I believe.
I really couldn't hear you very well, but I haven't heard anything, haven't had any direction on removing the parking spaces for the duck, and I didn't hear the second part of the question.
So, I know that a resident had asked me about the parking for the duck boat and whether anything had been renewed with that, or if we're going to open those back up to the public.
He did renew his commercial vehicle license, but he has not been operating. I don't see any reason not to put the bag over the duck sign as it was before. They do have two hour parking.
Two hour parking.
Yeah, right now, there is a sign up there that says two hour parking.
Okay, yeah, yeah. So something we can.
Yes, bring it up next meeting.
Okay. Yep. And then from the women's club.
There's, you know, yellow striped parking in front of the women's club as well, but that is apparently separate, and that's legit, needs to be there for some particular reason.
Like in front of the entrance door? Is that where you mean?
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
It's like a loading, unloading zone.
Okay, okay. I didn't know if those were related.
All right.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
No, it's got nothing to do with it.
While we have Lieutenant Enstfield here, I already asked him about this earlier, but since we've got him here about the social district, and just because I had commented that I love his reports, nothing out of the ordinary, and I don't know what that means, but then I was curious about the social district and thought since he's here, he could kind of talk to us, and how's it going?
Social district, district at all. There's been, you know, several more incidents with, you know, just open intaks with like beer bottles and that type of sort of things and stuff like that, but nothing that's out of the ordinary, we are not able to deal with and so forth, so we have people double them out when we see them, so.
One of your deputies had a chance to talk to me over by the docks, the city docks by Baldi Meats and down there, and he was wondering if we could get a, like some signs along those docks that say private docks. A bunch of people have been park, you know, bringing their boats in there, thinking that they're open to anybody, and they've had to deal with that on a number of occasions where they've had to track down the boaters to remove them, to put in, you know, since they are private. He was suggesting not public docks, because then people will think they're for anybody, but some signage needs to probably be purchased.
So is that, are you talking about docks that are on private property?
No, they're.
Or the city docks?
The city docks. So ones that are part of Wick's Park by Baldi Meats along that area.
The public.
So it was super busy, and he was saying that he had to deal with a couple of different occasions, yeah.
These are the docks that are in the lottery system that we have.
Yeah.
Got it.
Okay.
It's not uncommon, we run into that at times where somebody sees open slip or something, pulls it.
Yeah.
Runs into town or something, or whatever, so, yeah, it's unfortunate.
Maybe some signage would help.
Okay.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much. We also have Mr. Herbert here with Department of Public Works. While we've got him, any comments? Anybody?
Thanks.
Come on up, come on up.
Hey, hi, this is Scott Herbert, Public Works Superintendent. Just to, since we were just talking about the docks, decals have already been ordered for those white PVC posts, so it's going to say private on those, and then also the C-wall is painted yellow, and it does already say private on there, so, but it's already in the works, so we'll make it way more obvious for people.
All right.
Thanks, Scott.
Thank you, Scott. All right. Anything else?
And if we can ask city manager, I apologize, I didn't get questions out to you before this meeting, it was just a busy couple of weeks. I read your manager's report, it's great. I'm just wondering if we know anything on the Verizon small cell technology, and what is the latest with that? Has it been completed?
I don't know the answer, but Cindy was checking into that. Cindy, you're still on the call?
Yes, I did check with Fred Lau of Selco Partners, who are doing the installation there. They have not made progress yet. I think they're having trouble scheduling with Consumers Energy for the new pole, but that's the one by Marrows. The other two, I think, are ready to rock and roll. I don't know if they've been energized or not, but I will see if I can't find out.
I can tell you for sure, the one in front of my house is not turned on.
Okay.
So, not powered up. On that same, thank you for asking that question, Councilman Stan. On the same topic with AT&amp;T, do we have a timeline on when they expect to come back to the city with a formal proposal on what they plan to do, kind of what the scope is, what this, what this is going to look like?
They do not.
Can we get a date from them, at least a second, third quarter 2022, fourth quarter?
Oh, sure, I can, I can.
Yeah, so we, because I've had people ask me about it, and I just want to try to give them a little bit more firm timeline.
I can.
Thank you.
Check back in.
Thank you.
And then one last question. Mill foil. I know many of us got bills in the mail. Were those previous treatment bills or future treatment bills? Ann wins the latest on the next round of treatment.
So those would be previous treatment bills?
Okay.
Yep. And then.
For the season, like as in the summer season, the June.
You can expect one more, maybe, if they need to do a treatment again.
Yeah, they do. It's really bad.
When is it usually, so it's in June, and then again?
Again in August, late July, August.
Okay, okay. Sounds good, thank you.
Good. All right, anything else for staff? Very good, thank you all very much, really appreciate your reports. We have no agenda changes, no guest speakers, so at this time, we'll welcome anybody for public comment on agenda items only. If you'd like to step up to the podium and introduce yourself, and then please keep your comments to three minutes. Anybody online, Madam Clerk? All right, very good. With that, no introduction of ordinances, no public hearings, and no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. First up, wind feather sign approval for the Sagatuck Douglas History Center.
Madam Mayor, this is on page 24 of your packet. And the motion is there.
Okay, you want to run us through what's going on?
Yeah, sure. The Pump House is just trying to call, draw some attention to their facility, and they're asking for an exception to the ordinance in the city, which does not allow wind feather signs. If you don't know what a wind feather sign is, they're tall guys that just kind of sit there, and they don't dance.
Yeah.
They just sit there, they're the, they're the tall boys. Cindy, she's on the, on the call, do you want to add any more, please? And then there we have a picture right there, the tall boys, yep.
Sure. The Pump House has purchased five foot tall wind feather sign, and they want to put it in a location that will not be so visible from the street necessarily, but more visible from their park area, because where the people gather, it looks like the Pump House Museum is closed, and they'd like to have it up during operating hours only.
Okay. And also, I know John Kerr, I think, put this together, made the point of exceptions that city council or designate shall have the authority to waive any of the requirements on this section, so. With that, I'll entertain a motion, and then we can get into further discussion.
I would make a motion to approve the request to use a wind feather sign. I'm going to add, during operating hours only, at the Pump House Museum as described in the attached request to promote the Sagatuck Douglas History Center's Mount Balded Display.
Second.
All right, motion by Leo, second by Gardner, or wait, motion by Gardner, second by Leo.
Yeah.
Any questions, discussion?
Comment?
Yeah.
Would we consider this a permanent? Is it temporary? I mean, I don't think it permanent is, is good. I mean.
That's a, that's an excellent question.
And I, I don't mind having it on a temporary basis, hoping that they could look at something that's a little more, you know, conducive to the structure, conducive to the, to the building and things like that. He said they couldn't find anything right away, and I mean, I empathize, but this is one of those things that, where do you, once it starts.
It's a precedent setter.
Yeah.
To a degree, I mean.
So.
But it keeps putting the council, we're having to have to.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm more than willing to amend the motion to make it.
And maybe with the season?
Yeah, I'm more than willing to do that.
Hold on for a second, let's have discussion, let's have discussion from everybody.
Yeah.
Before we go doing.
That was my question, if they consider this, well, this is going to solve our problem forever.
Yep. Other thoughts? Mike, having been on planning commission and even historic district, I certainly understand that there would be those concerns, especially along our busy area, but we're, we're talking across the river, and there's really, that is the only building where that would even be necessary, because when I read this, I was kind of like, okay, precedent setting, on the other side of the river where there's very little traffic to help them get people into that facility. My, my question was, Cindy, did you know if this was a year round, if they're open?
They generally close in October and reopen in July. Yeah.
You know, Cindy?
It wasn't clear to me in the letter that they sent whether they wanted to do it every year, or it was just for this Mount Balded Display.
Okay, so at least for this, in this case, we're talking about for this immediate summer until they close for the winter. All right.
Yeah.
I can, I can.
And it looks like it's just Friday, Saturday, Sunday, noon to four, 12 hours a week.
Yeah. So my request would be that Cindy would keep an eye on it and see if it causes any problems for this year.
Comments from the neighbors.
Yeah.
They could come back next year and ask for another.
Absolutely, yeah, so.
Yeah, and maybe it's possible they can come up with a more, they can work with our own Mary Jo Lemansky or someone.
Yeah.
Artistic community artist.
Yes.
And come up with a more aesthetically pleasing, in-brand solution.
So we, we could approve the motion as it is for this year.
For the season.
This season.
Yeah.
And then.
I encourage them to up their game beyond Amazon.
Right, yes.
Going forward.
All right. Everybody good, everybody good with that? Yes.
Let's, let's.
Yeah.
Including during opening hours.
Yes, yeah, for this season. Everybody good with that?
I want to vote.
Yes, yes, well, I want to make sure everybody's good with that. Okay, all right.
I can read the motion back.
Yes, Madam Clerk, as you can, read the motion back as best possible.
Motion to approve the request to use the Pump House Museum during opening hours only as described in the attached request to promote the Sagatuck Douglas History Museum.
History Centers.
History Centers.
History Center Mount Balded Display for the season only.
That's good.
Good.
Sounds good. Yeah.
Good, very good. All right, this is a voice vote, all in favor, please say yes.
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 Anyone opposed? All right, very good. Next up, we have Blue Star Bridge Lighting Financial Convention.
Madam Mayor, this comes from the Kalamazoo Lake Harbor Authority. In support with the township and the city village of Douglas, they're recommending a navigational light system be placed on the Blue Star Bridge. Douglas has committed 14,000, and the township of Sagatuck has dedicated 4,000. The, the request of the city is to match 14,000. We, we've included in the packet material costs. It's a conservative estimate, and it's likely that the full amount would not be expensed. However, I've been in conversations with Ken Truster, and he's questioning the dollar amount. I've been trying to get some clarification from my colleagues, has not come through today, so at this point, I really can't support this, this motion or this recommendation.
Actually, I would move the table this, right now.
Okay.
You know, I was in favor of it at the harbor authority meeting because I thought it was a total of $14,000. I sure don't think I would favor spending 30 some thousand dollars on those lights, so I think we need clarification.
Well, yeah, in the, in the minutes from that, it said Douglas City Council approved 7,000, so does, I'm just confusing about the numbers.
At the estimate, it's a $9,000 estimate, and I understood that to be for the equipment, and then the, the remaining five would be for the installation, so.
Okay. I would, I would say, Madam Mayor, we need more information on this item.
The other comment is, then you get to the point of competitive bids, if you get up to a certain, certain amount, too, so I think that's something that Ryan fully.
All right. Very good, do you want to make?
I moved the table this item until, well, I guess the next meeting.
Next meeting, next Monday meeting.
Second.
All right, motion by Truster, second by Gardner. Any other discussions? All in favor, please say yes.
Yes.
Anyone opposed? All right, very good. At this point, we're, what, public comment on anything that you would like to comment about? Please come up to the podium, introduce yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes. Hi, Mary Jo.
I'm a fast talker.
You're good.
Three minutes. For you, those that don't know me, I'm Mary Jo Lemansky, former owner of Water Street Gallery, practicing artist, and I got myself involved in a program and an initiative called the Sagatuck-Fenville Arts Initiative. It was started last year after COVID. We decided that the arts around Sagatuck and Fenville and Douglas needed some re-energizing, so we started this program. It was a pilot program. We raised over $50,000 for the program, which was pretty amazing, showing the support that the program had, and we ran it for the year. We had great success, we had over 9,000 people that attended the events and the exhibits, but as we went through the summer, we found that this is a totally volunteer-run organization, that summer is a hard time to get volunteers to really work hard, so I ended up working really hard, and at the end, we had a steering committee that decided that for the future, unless we had a 501(c)(3), and we were really committed with the board that it wasn't going to be something that would be sustainable. So we worked through the Alleghan Community Foundation, we, they had a fund set up for us, and because we were fairly frugal and raised a lot of money, we had $12,000 left. So we met with the steering committee and decided what we could be the best way to use that money. We decided to give each of the cities Sagatuck and Douglas and Fenville $4,000 each, and that would be somewhat restricted funds to install a outdoor sculpture in each community. So we've been working on all three communities and their sculptures. Fenville has, last year we did a Latino initiative, and they would like to continue with that, so we have an artist named Hector Vega, who is creating a piece celebrating the migrants, and that will be in front of the city library, or the, the library, Fenville Library. The Native American Initiative in Douglas, we worked with Jason Quigno, and he's putting up a piece called Seven Grandfathers, it has to do with the ancestors of the Anishinaabe, and that has been approved, both have been approved by the city councils and the History Center and the library. So then we come to Sagatuck, and in many ways, you guys are in a great spot. We are raising funds for both the Quigno and the Hector Vega piece, but we thought about what culture might be a good culture to promote in each city. We found that, as we looked at the, the outdoor sculpture program, that there were no artists of color in any of the sculptures, so knowing that our, our communities, with the exception of Fenville, are basically residents with not a lot of minorities, we thought it was appropriate to focus and really bring some diversity, if not in our residents and tourists in, into the sculpture program. So Mike and Molly, who own the Amazwe Gallery, are generously donating a piece, it's a granite sculpture, it's called Whispers, and it's two figures that are kind of grouped together, and the contour of it looks like it follows the shape or of the continent. And so I'm here tonight to let you know that there will be more details coming about this, I think you might have some of that information in your packet, but Ryan and I've had a couple of discussions about it, and what we thought we would do is I would give a proposal and an explanation of the sculpture at the next workshop, and then hopefully having questions at that time, and then after that, at the next meeting, we're hoping there would be a vote by city council, and fingers crossed that we might be able to approve this piece, so thank you for your time.
Very good, thank you, that's wonderful, thank you. All right. Anyone else, public comment? Madam Clerk, anybody on? All right, very good. With that, we have several pieces of correspondence in your packet, and we'll move on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. I've provided in front of you just a written copy of the Household Hazardous Waste Day Report, and let you know where things ended up as far as the final costs, and what each municipality was basically on the line for. If you'll recall, I came and asked for up to $5,000, and based on our city of Sagatuck participation, it'll be a whopping $899.91. So I'm always happy to keep the costs really low, and as you know, with the help of Rotary, the Fire Department, and numerous donations that folks gave when they came in, it really helped to keep things very, very manageable, and, and the company that we worked with, ERG Environmental Services, were fantastic. I was, last year I was a little terrified with the amount of electronics that we collected, thank goodness, we didn't collect nearly that much this year, because it about killed us last year. I'm doing, I'm providing this report to each of the other municipalities, so I presented to Douglas last week, and I'll be in the township on Wednesday, so I wanted to at least bring you up to speed. Most of this, you all already know, the Styrofoam collection went very, very well, we had a good start, 360 pounds, and then we have another event coming up on the 24th of September, so save your Styrofoam. And then the Paper Gators, if you haven't seen them, they're all over. There's one at the old Hayworth site that they've actually, Douglas has built a, like a enclosure for, there's one behind the township hall, and there's one just to the north side of the high school, and that's been, the high school students, when the semester starts or school starts up in the fall, have really committed to recycling, recycling program at school, so I think it's really kind of initiated a really cool program. So that's the gist of recycling to this point, so. Other boards and commission reports.
Historic District Commission hasn't met the last couple of months because we haven't had any applications, but I just wanted to correct the notice, we meet the first Thursday of every month, not the fourth Thursday of every month, in case it bothers anybody.
Sounds good. Very good.
Planning meets a week from this Thursday, the 21st.
Okay, very good. Anybody else?
Nope.
Good, all right. Mayor comments, just council comments first, we'll start with Ken.
Yeah, I'd like to send kudos to the employees of the Sagatuck Township Fire District for offering to donate their beach passes to, I think, very worthy causes, less fortunate people in the area and veterans in the Sagatuck Douglas areas. That's a very, very nice community-minded gesture. Second, I'd like to commend all of us who took part in organizing, especially Garnet, the Fourth of July parade, it went off, I think, without a hitch, it was really well organized, and, and a good time was had by all.
Yeah, it was great, thank you. Mark?
I missed, wanted to ask Scott a question, so I'll take my time to do that. I noticed that the Mount Balded Wat River death was closed down.
It is. That, that area, that park, and the whole park actually has been in some pretty desperate need of repair, extensive repair, not just, you know, replacing decking boards or anything like that, so the, the whole set of steps that go there around the north side of the museum that go down to the river, it's going to involve resetting posts and pretty extensive work rebuilding the stringers, and so for that reason, we had to, we taped it off so that, to keep public out of there, so we're, I continue to try to work on kind of bringing light to the urgency of what this park really needs, and I really believe it should be a priority for the city to focus on Mount Balded Park.
I think that's, you probably noticed it from over.
I see it all the time, yeah, I was going to ask you about it.
Yeah, well, I know we need to remember, Scott's not here, he would probably do that to remind us that the Parks Committee is being pulled together and will be interviewing, and part of their responsibility be working with you to coordinate projects like that and managing expenses and working with you as far as what it takes to get that up to stuff.
Sure, great, thank you.
But it's anticipated that it'll be closed down indefinitely.
Until we can either get some, a contractor in there and spend some money on that, on that structure, then it's, you know, I consulted John Marxy from Flea and Vanderbrink about this, too, and, you know, if we're not going to fix it right now, then we had to close it, so.
All right.
We don't like that at all, but that's where we're at.
Thanks.
Madam Clerk. Hold on for a sec, we'll just keep with council comments. Go ahead, Scott, well, you can answer your question when we come around to you, Russ. Holly?
Thank you, I just want to echo Ken's comments and give my thanks to you, Garn, for a really great job, and with the community, I saw Ken in his convertible, in a convertible, we had lots of people step up, and it was really a joyful event, well-attended, so, and once again, things that we're dealing with at Mount Balded Park, I'm really looking forward to the Parks Committee, which is funded, and has a mandate to tackle those types of items very quickly, so.
I just wanted to thank the Rotary Club. I keep going up to the high school to drop my son off for various things and stuff, and there are, was probably at least 30 kids taking part in the Boys and Girls Club, and that is so great to see that they have a place to go in the summer. They've been at the tennis courts and enjoying the basketball courts, and they're going back and forth between the school and the grounds that are across the way, so excellent job by the Rotary, you know, to make that happen. It was needed in our community, and it's great to see such a well-attended Boys and Girls Club, excellent job. Also, same about the parade, it was fantastic.
Also, same about the parade, it was fantastic, of course, people were out and about in front of our place, and I didn't have a chance to attend the parade, but everybody was talking about how fantastic it was, and thanks so much to the volunteers, so.
Yeah, thank you, I would echo that comment about July 4th, it was fun to walk out in front of the DPW truck that Scott was driving, and then the painter. Now, that was cool, I, I forget, what's his name? Yeah, it was, that was a heck of a lot of fun, people loved that, and, but I do want to mention that we got a communication today regarding the candy at the parade, and I think that's something that the council should discuss sooner rather than later going forward. Very easy solution, in my opinion, is just simply not allow throwing candy, but just handing out to kids on the side of the street. I mean, that's, to me, an easy, easy thing to do, to keep everybody happy. So just, again, thank you for bringing that to the attention of the city, and it was a lot of fun. A few things, one is city council workshops. Going forward, if the decision is made to cancel the workshops, I mean, I like the workshops, that's a chance for us, for me, to personally kind of vet out some things and talk with council in more of an informal environment. So if those are being canceled, I'd appreciate a reason for that, as well as an opportunity to reschedule. Just because I think it's important for this council, and me as a council member, to have an opportunity to be able to talk without a, you know. The council meetings themselves are more oriented, actually oriented, of course, and the workshops themselves are a great opportunity to just kind of open up and discuss items. So I'd appreciate in the future, when they're canceled, if we receive some reasoning for that. Chain ferry, a couple of things that were brought up to me by some residents over on Park Street, if you enter, or if you walk off the ferry to Park Street, there's absolutely no, there's a sign there for the, is it Wollam Trail, I believe is the name of it.
Yes.
But there's no sign across the street that directs you right to Oval Beach, left to Bliss. So I would suggest that we look at putting up a small sign, either mounted on maybe the Cal Lake Lift Station, or perhaps in the ground there that would say Bliss to the left, Oval Beach to the right for pedestrians. Two is that today I had someone that called me and told me that they were driving past there, and some kid darted out, right out of the chain ferry. There's no safety signage there saying caution traffic, or something to make sure that people understand when they jump off and they come off, they're entering a, a busy street. It's a safety issue, and I would ask that we maybe look at some opportunities to provide better directions for our visitors, and then two, for the safety of our visitors. Something else that I've noticed is Butter and Whiskey, if you have not noticed, is closed, and I just may have more of a question regarding the streets, the outside dining that they have. What I'm hearing is that they're going through some management changes, and I'm not sure if they're going to reopen this summer, so I just question in situations like that, I don't recall in a discussion about expanded outdoor dining, if in the event something like this happens, can the city refund and get the parking spaces back if, if they're literally not being used? Just more of an open question on that, thank you. Also, too, is I'd ask, when is the, when is the Oval Beach, or pardon me, the, good Lord, Oxbow, they're using the Bald Head parking for their event? Is that this Friday? Do you remember, or did that go past already?
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you. Also, too, I do want to discuss the, what was mentioned, thanks, thanks, Councilman Beckon, for bringing up Bald Head. I'm going to respectfully disagree that we wait until the Park Committee gets up and running to address this. That is, that is the place for people to go. I mean, I just tried to imagine if we had to shut Oval Beach because we didn't have something done. We do an uproar, and Mount Bald Head, all aspects of it, just need to be addressed sooner rather than later. I, I applaud Scott for taking the public safety into mind, and working to make sure that it's safe for people to go up there. Maybe we should just go a step further and completely close it off, to make sure nobody can go in the spaces where it's unsafe. But I don't think we should wait any longer to really start addressing that issue up there. The steps going down to the fishing dock, we can't wait, we just need to be moving on this.
Is the, the deck also in disrepair, or is that still usable?
Yeah, I know, this, we'll wait to have this discussion at the next workshop, if you all don't mind, thank you.
Yeah, I, I'd appreciate, yes, I do.
I mean, if there's something, somehow we could do something for the.
Let's go on ahead. Finish it off. Anything else?
No, Madam Mayor, I still have some items, thank you.
All right.
I also wanted to get a status on the fence repair and replacement for Mount Bald Head as well, I know that there was some work being done to check into vendors and coming back with a recommendation. So I'd like to appreciate a status on that, as well as a communication from Mr. Lent regarding Oval Beach passes. Also, too, I, I commend the Fire District for their offer to not take the council up on the passes. I would also say we take Mr. Lent's suggestion very seriously, he's a former city manager, or pardon me, former city councilman, as well as planning commissioner. I think that the city, I think ought to take a serious look at returning to giving free beach passes to taxpayers. I don't think the financial issue that was mentioned previously is a financial issue for us anymore, and I think it's a really easy gesture for the city council to take to just acknowledge the fact that that's a place where people should go. And I'd like to see some action on that, too, is I also had sent an email to the city manager asking, requesting that we get some accounting for the beach passes that are being given away, the complimentary beach passes. So we know on a monthly basis how many beach passes are being given away at no cost, just so we know from a council standpoint. And whether that comes from the treasurer or the city manager, I'd appreciate council support to just align item on the city manager report, I think would be helpful, just so we know how many passes are actually being, being awarded, and what folks think about that.
Okay, all right. Mayor comments, the parade was wonderful, I made a point of thanking everybody who came through the parade at the end. Really appreciated folks stepping up, volunteers were a wonderful group, very helpful, and everybody who participated in the parade was absolutely wonderful and in really good spirits, so it was a really good day to, way to spend the day. So I, I thank everybody, and I made a point of personally thanking everyone as they came through. Lastly, just on a more personal note, we, I had a really good reminder of how special our little town is this last weekend. I had just about every family member in town for my father's 85th birthday. And seven of the family are younger adults, all of them legit and legal, and they found every possible way to enjoy the social life of this city, including the dunes, which they kept their Aunt Garnet out way past her bedtime. But it was just delightful because it was such a really good reminder how someone who's never been here before sees our town and what we have available, not just socially, but also just how quaint it is and how attractive it is for young adults. One of the things they said the last couple before they left today is, we want to live in a town like Sagatuck. We are going to try to find a sound, and that, for me, it was really, a really good reminder. You know, we all kind of get caught up in our lives and our jobs, and we're so busy right now, but to be reminded of how very, very special our town is, was really cool, so I wanted to share that with you, because I think that's really important for us to remember.
If I may add on that, Garnet, Garnet, this weekend especially, it seemed to be a lot of younger folks in town.
Yeah.
Babies, all these younger folks everywhere, and, and just having a good time, and it reminds me that those are the people that are going to keep coming down in future generations.
Yeah.
And when you ask, a lot of people who have moved here.
Yeah.
While we came here when we were kids, or we visited here, and, and that's, I, it's something I can mention.
Yeah, it was just really.
Add that, 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 I was just saying, oh.
Yeah.
It should be, you know, I'm glad you brought it up.
Very, very heartwarming, yeah, very good. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All right, we have, all right, Stanton and Beckon, motion by Stanton, second by Beckon. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Oh, all right, all in favor?
Yes.
We're good, thank you, enjoy the evening.